This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of November 2nd, 2020. Call the order please.
Councilwoman House?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilwoman Noak? I see you. And Mayor Walagora?
Here. Okay, before we continue, I just want to make sure that that Councilman Noak can hear us. Unmute her.
No, he's not muted. Might have to, we heard him earlier, he may have to rejoin.
Like you're gonna have to either maybe, maybe check out and check back in real quick. Can't hear you. Give him a minute before we get started, so we don't proceed. That better? Okay, yes sir. Okay, alright. We will continue. Next up, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Thank you.
Yes.
Next approval of the, of the agenda. Entertain a motion to do so.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I move we approve the agenda.
Councilman Mitchell will support.
Councilwoman House?
What Anna?
Councilwoman House?
Councilwoman House, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Alright, any modifications to the agenda this evening?
No.
Hearing none will continue. Approval of the minutes for regular session of October 19th, 2020, and closed session minutes of October 5th and the 19th of 2020. Any issues, changes?
No sir.
Continue. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during the council meeting you're allowed to address council. Yeah, anyone would like to do so, please chime in. Hearing none will continue.
No one on the chat.
Sorry. Okay. Start over. Consent agenda is our, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $376,676.75. B is the council appointment of Donald LeVar to the Harvard Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on November 1st, 2023. C is a mayoral appointment of Donald LeVar to the historic District Study Committee for an undefined term. And D is mayoral appointment of Quentin Meek to the Historical District Commission for a three-year term expiring on November 1st, 2023. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
That was Councilman Noak, Anna.
Got it, thank you. Clark Soy calling rule. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Uh, mayor, aye.
And Councilwoman House?
Councilwoman House, yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, thank you. Now we're down to report of officers, the first quarter fiscal year 21, report, Anna Syke. Finance Director.
I just choose whatever title I want to put on there. Okay, so, um, this report is for the first quarter of the fiscal year 21 budget. So that was ending September 30th, and we should be at 25% of budget. Um, Steve, you'll have to go way down. Keep cruising. Keep going. Up one. Oh wait, no I'm sorry, keep going. Um. Is my presentation not in here? Is it before all of this?
No, I wonder, I don't know. Oh, let's.
Uh, up. Up one, down one. Down one. There we go. Okay. So, if you look at the column for the original budget, we have total revenue for the general fund at $9,952,827. Then if you go down to the expenditures, the original budget was $9,904,626, which would leave $48,201 to add to fund balance. So then in the next column to the right, the amended budget, you can see that it's still the same as the original budget. There you go. And then the amended expenditures are, they increased about $66,000. So now that left a projected, um, we're projecting to take from fund balance by $17,242. So now if we go to the actual, uh, back up to the top of, okay, there we go. So the actual column, um, and that, I'm sorry, the next, the next column over, the percent of budget received. Okay, so we're at 43.27% as a whole on the revenue for the general fund. So that's really good, and the explanation of variance is over to the right. So for the general, it's at 70, 70.56%, and that's high due to, due to the collection of the summer property taxes. Also, there was two grants related to COVID that we didn't budget for, but I have since added those in. Um, city hall revenue looks good, just under 25%. IT is only at 1.51%. Um, there's no recorded computer admin services or internal fiber rent yet. That usually doesn't happen until later in the year. Cemetery is looking good. Police is down at 14%. We haven't received any grant monies, and liquor license revenue is minimal, and there's no revenue for dare. Fire EMS is at 2.3%, and that's because the EMS revenue line is currently at negative 8% due to the reversing entry that we do at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, also, we haven't received any state fire protection grant money. Moving down, public works is at 27%, so that's good. Lights is at 0%, but the budget is only $1,000, so no big deal there. Parks and Rec is at 1.23%, and this is because of a loss of pavilion rental due to Performance Locker closing, and also no grant monies received. Any questions on the revenue side?
The fire grant and other grants that you've been getting, are you hearing anything out of the state on those not happening, Anna? Or does it look like it's going to happen, just going to be delayed? What is, what is the word that you've got on those?
Bill Forbus, have you heard anything on that?
Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, fire protection grants actually went up substantially last year. We were getting about 15,000, I think last year was 30,000. Uh, we don't know the amount, but we do know that they will be forthcoming. It's always a surprise when they, when they arrive, the timing is variable each year, but we can be assured that it will happen eventually.
Alright, thank you sir.
Thank you sir.
Okay, so as, as a whole, so far at this point for the revenue, we are ahead of, of this point last year. The actual year-to-date, 9/30/2019 was at 4.2 million, we're at 4.3. So, we're 26,000 ahead. I'll call that a win. Um, let's move down to the expenditures now. So, we're doing really well. As a whole, for the, the general fund, we're at 22.98%. So we're under the 25%, which means we're doing pretty good. So if we look, um, the only ones that are kind of skewed are Building Authority, and this is that same old one where we make the, the annual payment early on in the year. So the rest of that is gonna be interest that we pay later on. Um, all of them are, are pretty much under, are, are under the 25%. Um, Parks and Rec is over, and that's because we made the annual payment of $20,000 to the Park Foundation Grant, or Rec Center. Also, equipment rent has increased, and wages are slightly over budget. So, if you look at the total line, you'll see that our actual, at this point, is below the actual at 9/30/19, so also another win right there. See that 2.49 million in the actual at 9/30/19? Yep, compare that to the actual at 9/30/20, it's lower, so that's good. Any questions on those? If not, we can go to the next screen, please. This is the cash balances and investments. Okay. So in the general fund cash, at 9/30/20, we're at 5.39 million. And that's, that's high as compared to previous years, but that's because we've converted CDs to cash because of low returns. We're waiting for something good to come along, and then we'll, um, we'll invest. And I, I like municipal bonds, but they have really long terms. So, um, the short-term CDs are not doing well right now, but it's probably higher than what we're getting from the bank, so I'll have to find one that, um, that looks decent. So, so that's why that is high. Moving down to the water fund, you can see it's only at 127,000, and that's because there was recently some very large payments to pay for Northern Divers, MacArthur Construction, and also a bond payment. So that really brought that down as compared to previous years, but it's much better than 9/30/18 balance. Yeah. That was, I think, before we, um, before we even them out. Um, okay, moving down to construction, Department of Public Works. You can see, um, 260, yeah, right there Steve, okay. And that's another one where we have a CD that we converted to cash, so that's higher. At first I thought it was higher because we made payments from the fire department, but we really didn't. We're paying those next year, so the reason it's high is because of CDs. Alright, let's scooch down to retirement, down towards the bottom. On the same slide. If you could scroll down. Yep. Okay, so the retirement section there. Uh, so I attached some, I did some bar charts this time, and for comparison, the balance at 12/31/19, which was pre-COVID, was $26,389,642. Six months later, at 6/30/20, the balance had decreased to $25,714,000. Um, and the balances have continued to decrease since that point. So the chart, the next slide, Steve? Yep, that one. Okay, so these are pension book values. The very first one is when we initially switched over to PNC. And so you, you see it's, it's pretty much the same. In fact, if you look at September of 20, our balance is actually lower than what we started with in January of 19. And obviously, I believe that's due to COVID. But our market values, um, uh, I think we're really close on the market values to what we started with in January of 19. Okay, uh, so going to back up one screen, Steve? Thank you. And then all the way down at the bottom is the retiree healthcare. So the balance at 12/31/19 was $1,581,000, and then six months later, at June 30th of 20, the balance was $1,516,516,000. And the balances have increased since then because we made our annual contribution of, uh, this year it was nearly $309,000 in July of 20. So if you go to screen 13? Yep. So that's why in July, starting in July of 20, you can see there's a big increase. That's because we put more money in, not necessarily because the market is doing well. Any questions on those?
Nope, none here.
Okay. Hopefully that makes sense. Um, those, those bars are broke out by, the gray part is equities, the orange is fixed income, and the blue is cash. So you can see, in July of 20, there's a lot of cash, and then also in August, that's because, um, Kirk, Kirk, he didn't know that we had deposited that money until September, and then he did, and he invested it in the market. That's all I got.
Excellent. Uh, as always, thank you, Anna, for a great update. Uh, anybody have any final questions before we receive and file that?
None here. I move we receive and file.
Uh, Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Clark Soy calling rule. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, yes.
Councilwoman House?
Councilwoman House, yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next on our agenda and last is the new business, Farmers Market lease at Mishkewas Warming Shelter. I think Rick Sollinger is gonna kick us off with that. He's back? If not, I don't know. Rachel?
No, I'm gonna handle it, I guess.
Okay, Steve, alright.
I've been running.
No, we can hear you right up until, right up until then. Yeah, we can. Nope. Showing muted.
Remuted myself, okay.
There you go.
There we go, alright. Okay, um, city staff has been working with the Alpena Farmers Market Group, uh, on the lease of the Mishkewas Warming Shelter for use as a farmers market office in Winter Market. The Alpena Farmer, Alpena Farmers Market Group would lease the shelter per the attached lease agreement from the city to establish the home base for their organization and market events. This being a community event, lease, the lease is in line with the intent of the city to utilize the space for the betterment of the community. The lease would run from the period of November 1st, 2020 through December 31st of 2025, and could be renewed with the approval from both parties. The Farmers Market Group would pay the city $700 per month for the period through December 31st, or for the period, uh, through December 31st, 2021, and then the rate would escalate by 2% per year after that. The city would pay utilities with any significant changes of use covered by the Farmers Market Group. Um, you know, we, we have an average basis of what we use for utilities, but if it were to go over that, um, we would look to the Farmers Market to pay that difference. Uh, in the past, before the Performance Locker lease, the city rented the facility from 12 to 21 times throughout the year, and generated between $1,500 and $2,600 in revenue. The Farmers Market Group would also be able to rent out the Warming Shelter to other entities for events with rental going to the Farmers Market Group. They would also be responsible for day-to-day maintenance and cleaning of the facility with any major repairs handled by the city. This is the same scenario the city operated under when we leased the, the facility to Performance Locker. Uh, it is a recommendation of city engineer that, uh, the council authorize the mayor and city clerk finance director, fi- city clerk, finance, treasurer and finance director to execute this lease agreement on behalf of the city. Um, I know you guys have, um, several questions and points you'd like to make on, on the agreement, and, uh, you know, we can kind of talk about those a little bit. Um, and I know, uh, JB Cook is here to answer some questions as well, if you have any, so.
Okay, um, I do, uh, this is the mayor, I do have some questions, I guess I can kind of kick it off, and then we'll move through each of, of council as well. Um, I guess, so, so my first question is, in order of, of your memo, would be the utilities. I, I wanna be, I wanna make sure that we're fair to the, the Farmers Market, I'm not really sure, um, what is meant by, by the statement in your, in here that the city would pay utilities with a signif- with any significant changes in use covered by the Farmers Market, is a, what is a significant change? Would that be based on, uh, the five years that the Performance Locker was in there as like an average, or?
Yeah, from my understanding, it would be based on, you know, the average over the past few years that we've, we've paid, and I think what we're looking at is an event where there would be a, a high usage of, of something, if there was a, something that, you know, I, I guess, my thought is, is if, if we had something where there was a high use of gas service, um, you know, if there was, uh, an event where there had to be a, a few, a bunch of heaters in there, some sort of gas heater, or if there was an event where the, there was a lot of water used, that type of thing, if there was some overage other than what was normal.
Okay, I just, I guess I just want to be, I want to make sure that it's very clear, just something there isn't an issue later. I would just like the language, and I don't recall, um, sorry, but I don't recall what the language was in the actual lease itself. With something, so it's clear, uh, later what, what a, what a significant change would be, just something, something a little bit clearer. Other than that, I was, I guess I'd have to say that I was originally under the impression that, that the Farmers Market would, would rent at their normal times on Wednesdays and Saturdays. I don't know that, I don't know that, that the Performance Locker had the ability to lease the building to anyone else that wanted to use it. Uh, and that's where, that's where I'm a little bit con- concerned about, about allowing a group, whether it's Farmers Market or anybody else, allowing another group to, to rent out, lease a city-owned public facility. So I'm, that, that's been my, probably my biggest question since Friday. As far as, is that what this is saying? So, like, if somebody wanted to have a graduation party on a Sunday afternoon, they would rent it from the Farmers Market?
Well, I think, I mean, I think that was the original intent, but, um, kind of going back to it and rethinking it, you know, I, I think that those events would still have to come through, um, the city, the city's typical, um, approval process for that type of thing.
Okay, 'cause I, and I just want to make sure that that's, that, that by the time we're done with this, that we, um, I think it's a great idea that Farmers Market moves in there, I thought it was right from the beginning. I just wanna, I just want to make it maybe easier on everybody. Um, yeah, yeah, if we're in fact, if the Farmers Market is in fact going to use, use it just for mainly, mainly Wednesdays and Saturdays, right? That if we're gonna say that it's available to other functions, any other, any of the other days, or even in the afternoons and evenings when they're, when the market is done, if we're gonna say that, then I think that that should be a function of the city. And then perhaps just reestablish the, the price that it, that it always used to be for us, for single, single use, kind of the same as Mishkewas or anywhere else, I guess, prior to the Performance Locker. I guess that's kind of where I was going or thinking. And correct me if I'm wrong, or if you'd like to. You would handle that, Miss?
Um, I, I think we could rewrite something into that, um, section. It's basically in section two, under Alpena Farmers Market, under B, um, because it does state, um, that any rentals would have to be to support and enhance the primary goals of the Alpena Farmers Market, but we could definitely rewrite that and, and bring it back to council for, um, for review. To address the other item, um, with utilities, I think that that could be clarified in, um, section four. Under the rent shall be as follows, with a separate section for utilities.
Okay, and I guess, I would, and I definitely want to know whether that's, I mean JB Cook is, is here, I can see him. I, I want to, I want to make sure that what we're discussing is online, and, and kind of parallels what you expected.
Um, yeah, and we, we're only gonna be in that facility for, from nine to one o'clock on a Saturday, basically, and that's only mainly gonna be through the winter months. So that facility will be open for, you know, any other activities, you know, throughout the summer especially, and any other days of the week. You know, I, I know, you know, anything that we would rent that facility to would be, obviously go, would go through the city. Uh, I, I would never, you know, of course, do that, but, um, we're, you know, we're looking, there's, there's four locker rooms in that, in that building, um, where we were looking for maybe some community groups that would want to use that building along with us, um, where they would get a locker room, just like we have our office, and we're, we're gonna use one space for putting our vendors', uh, tables and everything in. They could use, um, one of the locker rooms, we'll lock it, um, and then they can use that facility maybe one day out of the week, just like we're using it one day out of the week. So, and to have their meetings or, um, event, or whatever they would want to do, kind of be more of a home base for them as well. So we would like it to be more than just the Farmers Market, you know, building, it's gonna, we'd like it to see it, you know, used by the community, um, and use other groups. And then have, if, and if we do rentals and like a graduation party, or Christmas party, or, um, anything like that, you know, we, you know, it'd be offset some of the cost as well. You know, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking, would be how we'd use it. Um, I know there, we've been approached, there's been some talk of maybe a church using it on a Sunday morning, um, 'cause that, 'cause that, that space will be completely open, uh, where, where were the Farmers, or the Performance Mar- uh, Locker, they had all their equipment in there, we can pack up all of our stuff in, in 30 minutes and be out of that space for another group to use it. So that's, that's the difference between us and the Performance Locker, they, they couldn't use the space because they had all their stuff in there, where we, we can, you know, we can move out and leave, leave it for anybody else, so. No, that's, that's what I was thinking, so.
Yeah, that, and, and that's, I think that that's great, actually, and that's kind of what I expected it would be able to, people would be able to, to use it. People would be able to, to use it um for other, for other activities while you guys are having, having the um. The Farmers Market and I for one don't really have an issue. The, either the office or the um, or, or the locker rooms. I do, I didn't wanna, I guess I wanna tread carefully. Just, I guess, to protect both the Farmers Market and the city as far as who else uses other locker rooms. Are you there? How many, how many were there? There, there were four, right? Is that what you said?
There's, there's actually, there's four locker rooms and there's the shower rooms that actually would make, you could even block those off to even like create like six different storage areas. Plus there's the, there's the, an office and plus there's another storage area next to the office. So there's, and those all can be locked, and then there's a gate um that slides down between the main um lobby and all those, all those locker rooms. So that can all be separated out. Um, some of the, some of the doors on the locker rooms have been removed. Um, I'm not sure what were, some words are that, that would not allow the, all the locking of those different spaces, but. If those were found, they could all be locked separately.
Okay, um, so I guess, I guess just the, so, so now we're not necessarily talking about the, the main. The main building itself as far as other, I think anybody else that wanted to rent the building while you guys are performing. Your Farmers Market should probably go through the city and, and I don't know, I guess I'll leave it. Maybe to the opinion of, of Steve and Rachel as far as. Other entities using the locker rooms, should they, should they go? Through us or should they go through the Farmers Market to say if it's. Even if it's a church wanting to use it on Sunday morning or if it's a, or Boy Scouts or whoever, I have no idea. I just picked Boy Scouts for some reason. Let's just say they wanted to store their stuff in that, in another empty locker room. Should that be coordinated with? Farmers Market or should that just be turned over to the Farmers Market to do? To do and, and to charge them to offset what they're paying us? I guess it's, that, that theory is a little bit new to me, so I'd like your, your opinion perhaps and what you think.
Um, that's kind of a new concept to me as well, so I, I think I would like to talk further with um staff and, and JB about what that would look like. Um, initially, my thought is that type of stuff or that type of rental should go through the, the city just for consistency sake. Um, and that's just my initial thought on it, but I think we need to have um further conversation about um the sub leasing issue.
And I don't, um, and then I, I just, I think I just have one last thing. I'm sorry, I'm taking up. And then I'll, I'll, we'll go around the horn. I guess the other thing. Let's get the Farmers Market in there. I, I have no issue with that. Um, I do, when you're having, when you're kind of going back over this a little bit to. To maybe restructured a little bit, if, if the Farmers Market was, was counting on. Leasing, for instance, leasing those locker rooms and it turns out that that might be a better, better, something for the city to organize, but they were gonna offset their seven hundred dollars, then. Then let, let's take a look at, at, at seven hundred dollars, if they, if they're not getting revenue from something like that, but they expected to. I- is that still, is that still a fair fee?
Right.
Mainly because they're only gonna be using the, the building for, for two days.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, Mayor.
Okay, so, so if you, if you guys, at the same time, if you wanna discuss. The, the fee, the monthly fee, I would be okay with that. It, it's, it's quite a, I guess I'm gonna come right over and say it's quite a bit for. For only using it for two days a week and allowing, allowing other entities to be in the main, the main building or.
Okay.
And then, you know, and then if Anna wants to kind of coordinate going around or, or I can, I can just say, you know, that. Mayor from Tim, do you, do you have any, any questions or?
Oh, yeah, and I'm just gonna, I, I agree with the mayor on, on most of these things and I have a list of my own. Um, but just picking up where the mayor left off and it, I just wanna be clear about this. So if the Farmers Market. Rents out the locker rooms to other groups, um, is the open area still available to be rented? Or do the other groups then have, I guess. Occupy the whole building and like if I wanted to have a graduation party, um, is it an option to do that or is that now off the table?
You want me to answer that question?
Please.
Okay, yeah, um, like I said, we're, we're only there on a, on a, on a Saturday morning, so. So it's, I, we would work out some type of agreement with that group that used that. Um, maybe they would give it, they would use it Thursday night. Uh, one group would use it Wednesday night or one group would use it Sunday morning. Um, but, and then you'd still be able to. Rent that space out, um, you know, and like on a Saturday, you can rent that out all summer long cuz we're not using it. Saturday evening cuz we're not using it. Um, yeah, I mean, any day that we're, one of those groups is now using it, you certainly could, yes.
Okay, um, so um, sustain on that for a minute and then I'll, and then I'll, I'll go away from it, so. Um, if, and I know that you're, that the Farmers Market is paying the initial seven hundred dollars um for rent. And then they'll collect it perhaps from those other groups, but then the outside rent. Let's say that somebody rents it for a graduation party. Um, then that money goes to the Farmers Market as well, correct?
That was my thought, yes. That's how we would, how we were planning on paying that seven hundred dollars.
Okay, um, and, and so that being said, I, I think that the, the rentals for the building should be based on what the city's. Current rental structure is for our, our parks, so the, the same as somebody who was going to, um, let's say, um, rent. Um, the band shelf. Um, I think that um, the rental should be based on that because it's still a city park. Um, so that, that's my opinion on this and people can go back and talk about all of this and then bring us back. Um, um, the best, the best, I guess, for everybody. Still on the rental part, um, even when um the Performance Locker was in there, and I'm gonna use the Harbor as another example. Um, those entities um still give something back to the city. Um, now, I'm not saying you're gonna make a ton of money, but the Performance Locker um, um had an agreement where they gave back to the city. Um, we get, even though we have an agreement with the Harbor, the people who run the Harbor, um, the city still. Because it's still city property, um, we still get something back. I'm not saying it has to be a ton back, but I would like to see something in here um about that. And this is all open for discussion, so I'm gonna quickly go through the many items that I had with Rachel this morning. Some of it's just housekeeping in the document itself, um, but under section one, um, and B. I think that um item six should actually start off that section um at the top so that it. All improvements performed to um the warming shelter shall be done with the approval of the city, et cetera, et cetera. And then everything that comes after that kind of lays out what, um, what we're talking about, rather than have that at the end of the. At the end of that section because I, I, I just think it fits better at the beginning and that, that's, that's my two cents where. Um, um, I do have an issue with, um, I do have an issue with the first part of this where it says. Um, um, the, that you can operate um the Farmers Market within the Mishkewas Warming Shelter. And the common park areas adjacent to the Mishkewas, Mishkewas Warming Shelter. I'm not sure um what that means because we're renting out the warming shelter, not the park. And I don't wanna impede on anybody who wants to come to the park and do things so that maybe you're using a portion of it. And somebody else wants to do something. I think that we have to um clear that up. Because no matter what, it's still a public park, so I'm not sure what area outside the area that you may use. For the Farmers Market in the summertime um that would refer to. And does that refer to every group who may rent a locker room? And the locker room is new to me tonight, so I'm just kind of throwing it all out there. Um, I think that has to be a little bit more defined and um. And going back to just the building itself, not the surrounding area. Now, I'm not saying, I think that. The agreement should be if the Farmers Market or any of the other groups wanted to hold an event outside of the building. Um, that they could come to the city, just like anyone else who would wanna have a, um, you know, graduation party, whatever. Um, i- in the outside park um and, and get it approved. It's not, it's not like you can't do it. But I don't want somebody to think that they have a free rein over the entire area. Um, yeah, and I'm, and I have to um keep referring to my notes. Um, nothing was, and so I'm gonna go on things that, um, well, under number um four. It's, and this is just, I think, more of a typo. It says seven hundred dollars a month, including utilities as amended for the first year of the contract. I think it should be um utilities included. Um, I think the wording on that is a little bit ambiguous and I also would like to see that something about. The, the rent and the utilities added to um number three because after that, nothing is said about. Um, nothing is said about utilities and just to make the document um. Comprehensive throughout the whole thing, I think we should repeat the seven hundred dollars a month in section three because it's just simply not mentioned. Um, nothing is mentioned in here about the parking area. Um, not that I want any of the parking spots. Um, um, marked off for a Farmers Market. It's a public, it's a public lot. I think that it should stay that way. But I would like to see um as much of the traffic that will come through there either stay in the parking lot or on the road. Roadways that, that wind through the park and not park on the grass. Um, with the exception of perhaps when people are loading and unloading for the Farmers Market because I know that's, that will be an issue, but um. The Farmers Market gets a little bit crazy down there on Saturday when we have it in the summertime, but now that you're using the building, I think that most people can utilize the parking lot or the. Or, especially in the wintertime or the um roads that run through there. Um, um, and I think we've, Matt already discussed, um, the city should approve the rentals. Um, and, and in this agreement, um, it doesn't say who the contact person is. Or who will sign the agreement. Um, and I know that changes, you know, we all sit on boards that changes from time to time, but I think that. Um, whoever can sign this agreement should be um listed and. Who, who is the contact person if somebody wants to rent? Who do they contact? Do they contact the city? Do they contact the Farmers Market? Um. I think that we need to, I think that, that, that is another thing that we need to clarify. Um, there is in section three, um, in section three, um, it says the sh- city shall be responsible for major repairs to the structure. And permanent accretments um to the structure and, and I, and I don't disagree with that. Except if the damage is done by a, by a tenant, um, then I think that should be an exception and, and it should be spelt out in that area. Um, outside of that, I have no issues with the city um maintaining. The permanent parts of it. Um, I agree with Matt, you know, we have to define what is substantial when it comes to the utilities. Because we can say it's substantial and the Farmers Market or anyone who's renting can say, well, it isn't. I would rather not have those arguments afterwards. I would have, rather have them clarified within the document. Um, and the letter, it is spelt out in the document. The letter was different because the letter said that. That the rate would increase by two percent um per year after the first year, um, but that's not exactly um what it is. Um, it will be capped at two percent and it depends on um the rate of inflation, so, um, but that is spelt out. The letter is wrong. Um. Oh, in the document, it said that you're, you're going to rent to, and, and this is more in the letter, um, to promote. Um, promote the mission of the Farmers Market and I, I can't put my hands on it right now. Um, so if, if that's true, and I'm not sure it is anymore, I, I, if we're going to rent spaces to other people. Maybe that should be left out. Or if it is left in, then I would like to def- like to know what is, what is anything that promotes? The Farmers Market or enhances the Farmers Market. Is it cooking classes? Is it whatever? If that's changed since this document was um made, I have no issue with changing that, but it clearly says that. Um, um, that, that is the purpose of the, of leasing the building is to um promote the Farmers Market. Um. Uh, and what you do. Um, ta ta. I'm just going through my notes. Oh, these were just some housekeeping things that I brought up to um Rachel earlier in the day. Um, that are missing in this document, but I think that they should be added and um. You're gonna rent the Farmers, we're, if we rent to the Farmers Market, which I have no issue doing. Um, there is the possibility of somebody using it as living space. Um, this has been an issue in another building. Um, but I just wanted to put in there that it can't be used as a housing or living space for anyone. Um, at any time, so no overnight. Um, it does have a kitchen and a shower, or somebody with a sleeping bag could. Um, you know, sleep in there. Um, I, I, I would, I would not like to see that happen. Um, however that, however that is worded, um, I would like, it is a business. Um, for a nonprofit, not ever to be used as, as space to house people. Um, if you're gonna have events in there, and I'm not sure exactly um what you have in mind or any of the groups would have in mind. But if there's alcohol on the premises, um, I would like to see um it added in here that, um, you know. If there's alcohol on the premises, and I know that um anyone can get a liquor license from the state for events and stuff that. If there is that we abide by all of the state and local laws and licensing permits and the same with gambling, if you're gonna do. You know, you know, fifty fifty drawings or anything like that, I would like. I would like it put in here because those are special, those are special licenses that you, and insurance that you have to get. Um, that wouldn't be covered in anything that, um, that you're, that you're supposed to get currently. Um, and I think that, um, and I'm not sure what the occupancy limit on that particular building is and I'm not sure if anybody knows that. But we would have to abide by that, whatever it is, and I think that should be added to the agreement. Um, and I also would like the building, and I'm, and I asked this earlier, if we inspect that building as owners of the building yearly for fire inspection, do we? Do we do an inspection on that building? Did Performance Locker do an inspection on the building? No? I think it's just, um, it's a rental. I think maybe it can fall under the rental program and. I think it's just a good idea for having people in and out of that building to have an inspection done yearly. Or every third year, whatever is for um the rental inspection. Um. Oh, ta ta ta, oh. Um, and I think if, 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 if there's any cooking or anything going on in the building, I think in, in the document. Um, and just to cover all bases, um, we should, it should be that they have to abide by all health department rules. Um, and then garbage removal. Um, I'm not sure currently there is a dumpster there, is there? No, anybody? No?
Steve? No, I'm not sure. I would say you have to either, I mean, there is a enclosure there.
For one?
Yeah.
Um, so I just think that we should um add that because who's responsible for that? And, and I'm, and I don't know how the Farmers Market works now. If people bring things, do they take things? So if I bring in boxes and bags and anything leftover, do I take it when I go? Or do, is there a place that they currently can put it?
If we were responsible for any of this trash and all, you know, we would get, we, like on Saturday, we just took everything with us and. And what, we don't have any trash from what we do, basically.
Okay, but we couldn't be.
Dumpster or anything like that.
Okay, but we couldn't be guaranteed that any other group, so if, let's say you had, let's just say that you had a group in there that was a, a graduation party. Um, and they would generate trash, where, 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 where would that go?
Oh, it would have to go into bags in the, in the facility and then in the back, I guess that dumpster or dumpster. It would have to go into bags in the, in the facility and then in the back, I guess, that dumpster, dumpster in the back, I guess, is what we'd have to do or we'd have to have some cleanup agreement with them.
Okay. But I just think that we should, we should put garbage removal as part of the agreement. However, that washes out so that it's not an issue for anybody in the park. That's kind of what I have. I'm sorry. I apologized to Rachel earlier as well. But outside of that, I think that, you know, renting to the farmer's market is, is a good idea. They're a good group and, you know, I support them, so.
Cindy, I took really good notes, so.
I'm recording and all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. I guess down the, the normal table would be, like Noak, I think would be next to answer.
After further review of everything that's been discussed, I have no additional questions.
That was incredibly thorough, Cindy.
You're welcome.
Moving down to Amber.
Yeah, I think if, if the matters that have been brought up are clarified and spelled out, that, you know, I, I support, since I have the farmer's market in there, I think it makes sense. And then after that, like I said, just clarifying the terms though for everyone's sake.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Danny?
Yeah, there was a couple of things I was looking at. First of all, this is going to be operated year round, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so parking lots, snow removal, who?
The agreement, agreement was, I think, was the city was going to, the larger parking lot would be the city. The, all the sidewalks going up to the building would be the farmer's market.
Can I just pop in? Because I mentioned this to Rachel earlier that in the agreement, we should have our ordinance, the city ordinance for parking lots in the wintertime and what time you have to be out of the parking lot so city can come through on plow. I apologize, I missed-
But we can note that and put it into the agreement. Steve and I talked a little bit about it today.
Yeah.
Well, I was glad that I could help Cindy along there with that idea. The, the other thing that I have is, is the farmer's market leasing the whole building at 700 a month?
That's the way it was written, I understand.
Yeah.
I couldn't quite understand it. We're a little garbled.
I'll, I'll hold that they accept the outdoor, one outdoor space, I think, that, that Rich had mentioned that the city was going to keep.
But I meant the building inside.
Inside, yes.
At 700 a month, that was the whole inside, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was the reason I came up with that is if they, if they can sublease to others, then, and, and make up monies that way, then why shouldn't they just go ahead and pay the utilities? See what I'm saying?
The utilities are, are very hard to separate. I don't know all the ins and outs, but I believe they're, part of them are matched in with the water plant. So the problem is, you know, we, we, we took a percentage at some point in the past and that's what, that's kind of how we, we figure it, that 700 dollars covers whatever utilities that they would use.
Well, would you be figuring out what Performance Locker paid in the past?
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Well, the reason I was saying that though is that if, if they could sublease, then they could pay for it and the city wouldn't be paying for it. See what I'm saying? Because they're getting income in off of the subleases. With the approval of the city, of course.
When Rich gets back, I'll, we can discuss that with him. I know there was something about it being hard to break out. Steve, was the, were the utilities included in the Performance Locker?
I'm, I'm not familiar, but I, I know that this agreement was modeled after the Performance Locker one to a degree. So I'm pretty sure they were-
Yep, so I don't think that they were broken out in that Performance Locker agreement either. And I think the reasoning was is because they're clumped together in, maybe with the, the water treatment plant. But I need to verify that with Rich when he gets back from vacation. So we can certainly take a look at that, Danny.
Okay, sounds good. I'm good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I remember that coming up with the, with the Performance Locker as far as the utilities, that everything you're saying, sounds like what I remember him, Rich saying about the utilities before. So I guess we'll, we'll kind of, we can kind of close for now. I, I really, I'm really apprehensive about the, about the sublease of the locker rooms for storage to other entities and I'm not sure where we want to go there. I'm just not sure where we want to go there. So staff wants to kind of discuss that. It may be, it just seems really simpler to me so we don't have disputes and there aren't issues with, with the farmer's market later that we, that we get the farmer's market in there, we come up with a good, with a good, good cost for them that works. And if it works with, you know, the, the main, renting the main building for the times that they're in there for the farmer's market and then the office and one locker room for them to put their stuff and then, or however many locker rooms that the farmer's market needs for there so they can do what they do. And, and any of the rooms that are left over, I'm, I'm kind of swaying towards that we, that the city kind of holds on to that. And, and that way, that way, any, any other function that happens at Mishakewas outside of the farmer's market on Wednesdays and Saturdays should probably go back to the parks, to the engineering department, as it was for any other park and Mishakewas prior to the Performance Locker. I think it, discuss it at, at will with staff and Rich when he comes back. I just think it'll be easier and cleaner for both farmer's market and for the city to be able to be organized and, and the scheduling and only having one calendar and things like that. And I'm really, there's a lot of different storage places around town that, that have costs for storing things the same size as the lock, as the locker rooms. But if, like, let's just say, let's just say a, a, a church or something wants to use it steadily every Sunday morning for several months and they want to store stuff in there, it might be easier for us to, for the city to say, okay, it's however much a month to keep your stuff in a locker room and then, and then we would just coordinate and let, make sure the farmer's market is aware that somebody's coming in there right after them or the next day or something. I, I don't know. I'd like something that works just to kind of make it as smooth as possible for everybody. And if you guys want to, I don't know what, I don't know what Anna calls this anymore. We're not tabling yet, we're- I'm sorry, what?
Postponing.
We're going to, I think we can safely postpone the actual contract itself. JB, when, when do you guys expect to move in there and start? Is that this coming Saturday? You're ready to go?
We, we used it this past Saturday, actually. You know, we've already used it before. So it's very cold outside right now. We don't, the mall is not going to be letting us go in there, you know, it's, so. Yeah, we, like I said, you know, I don't, I don't, we don't, I don't want to be a landlord. I know, I don't want to have, have all this responsibility and rent all these different blockers out. That's, I mean, that's, this is a, this is a volunteer job that I do. So that's a lot of headache and a lot of responsibility that I don't want. So, I mean, if the city is, wants to rent those out or, but, but I just, I think it's kind of a waste of a great space to only use it for a farmer's market on one Saturday morning of, 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 a week in a, you know, through the winter months. And, you know, it should be used as a community center, you know, it's, you know, that, those, those spaces could be used for that. I mean, that's, I'm not talking about like renting those locker rooms out to a business and having their functions there. I think it's, you know, it should be used like, you know, a community center rather than a, than a, than a business. You know, it was a private business in there before, basically, and the community couldn't use it. So great things could be done in that space again. I don't, you know, I just, I, that's, that's what I want. And I, I don't, I don't know if we, the farmer's market can't afford $700 a month if we're not getting some return on, of rentals from, from a, from another, you know, community group in there, basically. But if the city would, wants to give it to us on Saturday mornings and they could use it as a home base, use the office and, and a one, one space on the Saturday morning and then maybe something on a Wednesday morning if we had our arts and craft people in there and the farmer's market outside, we might do that. But, yeah, we don't, you know, we're not trying to make money off it. We're just trying to have the farmer's market. We're, we're a nonprofit group. We're not, we're not trying to, you know, benefit from the, from, in that way, basically.
Yeah, and that's, that's great. And, and I think we can, I think we can work something out so you, so you don't end up being a landlord and put that back on, on us as, as any other park or structure. But I, I don't think there's an issue with, with anybody on, on council with you continuing to use it until we get this, till we get this straightened out.
And so I'll work with, we'll work with JB and make sure that we come up with some language that's a little bit cleaner and, you know, a scenario that really works for everyone.
Excellent. So we will postpone that, that contract until it is ready. I appreciate everything you do there as well, it's your JB. And we'll, we'll talk with you soon. I think we can close this one for today and then we'll adjourn to close session for the collective bargaining agreement.
I think we need a motion to postpone.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I move we postpone the farmer's market agreement.
Councilman Noak, support.
Taking the role, Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
Councilman Noak, I move we adjourn to close session to discuss the collective bargaining agreement.
Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Mayor Walagora?
See you there.
Okay, and just for the media and anybody else that's on this meeting, we were, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to leave this meeting open.
I'll take role.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yeah, he left already.
Okay, Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and then, so Steve, you're going to leave this meeting open. We're just going to log out of it and then log back in when we're done.
Correct. Yep, I will, I'll put a sign up and mute everything on this meeting and I'll go start the other meeting right now.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Amber is on the screen. I'm here. There he's coming in.
I'm here.
All right. Let entertain a motion to ratify the contract with the patrol unit. Is that what it's called? Call it the right thing, please. Police, police, police patrol.
P O L C.
I move we approve the agreement with the P O L C.
Johnson, second.
Just to clarify, this is for a three-year term, correct? So that I get it right this time in the minutes?
Yes, a three-year term.
Okay, well, go ahead and call the order. Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilman Noak, I move we adjourn.
Johnson, second.
We are adjourned.
All right.